All right, Mayor Milton is unable to attend tonight's meeting, so I will be running the meeting, but will also maintain my representation for Ward 1 and will be voting on tonight's matters. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Schultz.
Present.
LeBlanc.
Here.
Denham, Milton, Cooper.
Here.
Houghton.
Lucas.
Oh, yeah.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
All right, public comment, we're ready, huh? Oh, no, no, we gotta do the pledge of allegiance. I skipped right over that, didn't I? Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening, the opportunity to gather together as community members. We thank you for the summer that we're having and the ability that we have to feed our families through the tourism season that we have here in this community. Continued prayers to lift up to Mr. Mayor, who is unable to be with us tonight, and just ask that you be over this meeting and ask that you give us the discernment to make great decisions. Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Marshall. Oh, sorry, Artie was supposed to... My contacts are so dry, I can't see anything. Sorry, we'll let you pray afterwards, Artie. All right, this is the public comment section of the Board of Alderman Meeting. At this time, the Board will hear the citizens who have signed up in the order, they are listed. Please note, the clerk will let the speakers know when they have 30 seconds left and a notification will sound when their time is up. We ask that speakers wrap up their comments upon hearing the 30-second warning. If a speaker would like a board member to bring an item from the consent agenda down for additional discussion, please note this request during comments. Please come to the freestanding microphone in front of us to address the Board. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We do, we have two speakers. Our first one is Gary Gromen, speaking on "It's Not Your Grandma's Google Search Anymore." Well, I don't know, I don't know what to say about that. Apologies, we have one speaker. Mona Miller, speaking on Branson Meadow Mall revitalization.
By show of hands, have any of you ever been to Epcot's Land Pavilion in Disney World? You have, okay. You're gonna understand what I'm going to say. Back in 2012, when you got the Red Roof Mall, I came here with the idea of building a aquaponic agricultural attraction, such as the Land Pavilion in Disney World. The Land Pavilion was built in 1983, using all the technologies and sciences of growing food healthily, organically, in a closed building, with the technologies of 1986. Well, the Branson Meadow Mall, like the Red Roof Mall, is built of nothing more than concrete and red iron steel. It is capable of supplying and housing a full aquaponic growing facility, producing enough food to feed the entire region, healthy, organic food. You add the technologies of today, in the Land Pavilion, they use a boat going through a river. Here, we could use a gondola, a spaceship, a spaceship that includes an entire three-dimensional hologenic film with inside of it, where you fly through the past and into the future of growing good, healthy, organic food. Now, Missouri, we are talking about building more sports again. Well, not everybody that comes to Branson plays sports. They do not all go by religion. They're gonna build a Bible experience, but I can guarantee you 100% of the people who live here and visit here eat. And we need good, healthy, organic food. Most of our businesses here produce food or sell food. We have over 400 places within the city limits of Branson where you can purchase food. And by doing that, by putting in the Branson Aquaponic Experience, we also bring in an educational element, a tourist element, but we would make Branson the only 100% self-sustainable city in the world. We would be able to supply enough food, we have all the power we could use, and we have enough housing to house sustainability. And I'm asking you, before you consider the new revitalization of the Branson Meadow Mall area, which you have deemed to be a blighted area, before you do that, consider bringing in the Branson Aquaponic Food Attraction. Remember, Missouri is the agricultural state, the goddess of agriculture stands on top of our Capitol Building, and we have some of the greatest agricultural schools within the boundaries of the state of Missouri. So you bring in an educational element, where we can bring students here to learn how to grow in a closed, sealed position. In 86, they still needed to put glass domes. We didn't have LED, AI, and all of the robotics and technology that we have today, that we can grow a tomato in exactly the right temperature, with the exact amount of light, with the exact amount of nutrition that tomato needs, and never have it touched by human hands. Hope you all will consider it, hope you all invite me to a study session, so I can tell you exactly how it can be done, utilizing those buildings, because we could connect them, don't have to bulldoze them down, they're concrete and red iron steel, which gives us the ability to seal those buildings off, cover the roofs with solar panels, and now that we have the ability to create our own energy, because thanks to President Trump, we could actually use cog gen generators to create the energy needed to run the facility. So please consider it.
Thank you. That was a lot of big words. Hologenic and all that stuff. Is that all we have?
Yes, sir.
Next is the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the Board or staff would like to have moved down from the consent agenda to ask for, ask additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move Item 5 to be removed from the consent agenda and placed as the first item on the regular agenda.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the items on the consent agenda as amended?
Your Honor, the items on the consent agenda are as follows: Approval of the Board of Alderman Minutes for the July 8, 2025 regular meeting; Acknowledged receipt of the Planning Commission Minutes for the April 1, 2025 regular meeting; Acknowledgement of dispersments for June 18, 2025 through July 11, 2025; Final reading of Bill Number 6564, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement with Branson Public School District for participation in a comprehensive process with the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Prevention Team, adapt and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract; and Final reading of Bill Number 6566, an ordinance approving the Addendum with Southwest Missouri Council of Governments, SMCOG, for comprehensive planning services and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract. All right, that concludes the reading of the consent agenda as amended.
All right, do I have a motion approving all items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, Madam Clerk, now provide a roll call vote for the consent agenda.
Schultz.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Houghton.
Yes.
Lucas. The result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the final reading of Bill Number 6565, an ordinance amending Section 2-72 of the Branson Municipal Code pertaining to procedures for regular agenda.
All right, you've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6565. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved. Second.
We have a first and a second. We have a motion and a second. Are there any members on the Board wishing to speak regarding this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I move to commit this to a committee of Mr., of Alderman Houghton, myself, and the city mayor for further considerations and to bring back a draft for the Alderman to consider.
Is that a motion and a second? All right. So are we asking to, are you asking to postpone this, or just? Yeah, right, okay. All right, I'm going to postpone the final reading of Bill Number 6565. Oh, we gotta vote on it? Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just for clarification, rather than just simply postponing it, my motion is to send it to a committee to work on the item and bring it back to the Alderman.
Is there a committee, I mean, but?
The committee that was in my motion was Alderman Houghton, myself, and the city attorney.
Right. Can we just vote on forming a committee right here?
Yes.
Oh. So that is the motion, and a second is to move it to that committee?
When you made your motion, you said Alderman Houghton, yourself, and the mayor, and now you said Alderman Houghton, yourself, and?
Yeah, thanks for correcting that. If I said that, that was my mistake, I meant to say city attorney rather than mayor. Obviously, the mayor's not available, so, yeah, I think the city attorney makes more sense.
Alderman Schultz, it might make more sense if we do a motion to... Can you hear me now? All right, it might make more sense if we separate this into two motions, one to form that committee, and then one to send this to that committee.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but the motion to commit is a single motion, and forming the committee is appropriate with the commit. Oh, maybe I can just explain, if I can offer my comments on it.
Well, so far, you've kind of taken it upon yourself to do this, so yeah, go ahead and continue to explain yourself.
So, I just think, so the original suggestion from the city attorney relative to this issue was that he had additional ideas based on, I think he said, based on the TIF meeting that had occurred, that some additional thoughts occurred to him, and he sensed there was no consensus from the Alderman as to what to do with this particular bill, that he'd like it deferred. My suggestion is that we let the city attorney continue to work on this, but we also include a couple Aldermen to give him some input into this item before it comes back to the Alderman for consideration. So the motion to commit is to delay the item, essentially, so that this small committee can work on it and then come back, and then it would be in front of the Alderman to decide, is this the way they'd like that bill to read or not?
Well, I think it's my understanding that, I mean, a lot of times, city staff does this work, and then we have the opportunity to review it before it comes to the Board. So to, I don't know, to self-appoint yourself to a committee just seems a little bit obtuse to me. I don't know, am I out of bounds on that?
Go ahead.
Thanks to both of you. It is correct that our city attorney, Solan McGee, was looking for more direction as we re-watch the tape from the last meeting. We didn't have a real clear direction on where you all wanted us to go. I think in the interest of saving time and condensing process time, et cetera, I have absolutely no problem with this direction, so I'm certainly comfortable with it.
I just, oh, I just muted myself. Now, I understand what you're saying now. It's not like you guys are just making the plan, I mean, you're getting the ideas and bring it back, and then we'll all gather on it.
So, I guess, my only suggestion or ask, yeah, that's, I was gonna say, why don't we just have one representative from each ward be part of that committee? That way, all three wards are represented, and that would be?
That's, that's a good idea. So Ralph, are you volunteering or so? Okay. So do you need to read, read the motion, or?
So I would amend the motion to include Ralph in the committee.
Second.
So do, so we have a motion and a second. Do we need to vote on? Because we have two out there, right?
Correct, yes, so you'll want to vote on the amendment to the original motion, and then we'll come back in and vote on the motion amended.
So we're gonna do a roll call vote on the amended?
You don't have to do a roll call, you could just do voice.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So now, that was on the amendment, now we're gonna vote on it? As amended, okay. You ready?
I am ready, let's do it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I get it.
Got it, okay.
Whoo. That was fun, right off the bat, wasn't it? All right, there we go. I can't see nothing, hang on. Forgot my... There we are. Are we on this here? Yeah. Hillary.
Yes.
Where are we?
So, you're, we are going to do the TDD, the Transportation Development District Property Owners Meeting, so we need to call that to order and then do a roll call.
We don't need to get out of nothing, just call, call?
Correct, it's happening within this meeting.
Okay, so we're gonna, joint meeting, call to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll for the property owners of the Branson Landing Transportation Development District?
Schultz.
Present.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Cooper.
Here.
Houghton.
Here.
Lucas. You're here.
I'm here.
Yep. You are. Yes. You were voted in last year.
I am.
Thank you, Your Honor, you have a quorum of the property owners.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the property owners' meeting of July 23, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the Board?
Hillary?
Yes.
Is this discussion on the minutes, or?
Correct.
Okay.
None? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries.
All right, I will now entertain a motion to vote 61 shares to elect Alderman, me, Alderman, me, Alderman Clay Cooper, and 61 shares to elect Alderman Glenn Schultz to the Board of Directors of the Branson Landing TDD, each for three-year terms that will expire April 2028.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the Board? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh-oh, Artie had a question.
So, the Transportation Development District has 61 acres, the city of Branson is the sole property owner, so each of the directors gets 61 shares each, that's just the terminology of the TDD. And you, the Board of Aldermen, since the city is a sole property owner, the Board of Aldermen are the property owners, so right now, you're voting on directors, which is a separate meeting. The city owns 61 shares, and by extension, you as a Board of Aldermen, yes.
Congratulations, Artie.
Hillary, I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so this is my fourth year as an Alderman, right? I usually like to try to do my homework ahead of time on stuff like this, but I thought asking a question might be good, because we're also in front of the public, basically. You know, as anybody who's sort of in public service or anything, I like to put together a resume and put all the boards and committees that I'm on and have served on, this is the one that I always happen to leave off. Well, going back through, I've served as the Secretary and the Treasurer of this TDD. I guess my question is, from time to time, it seems like a rather pro forma type of thing, right? We go through the motions on this, you know, is there any additional clarity that we could give to the citizens, or just any commentary that can be given on, is there anything else that we should necessarily be doing as members of the TDD, other than just holding these sort of pro forma every second meeting in July, every year, essentially?
Because it is confusing. I mean, I remember my first, I was just saying, what is this? Yeah.
Oh, that's my answer, right?
I was thinking, why would they trust me with this? That's what I was saying.
Yeah, I, it's, it's an annual meeting, too, this is more on my radar as a housekeeping item, so we have to approve a budget, we have to elect officers, and then we have a bond council that takes care of it from here. I don't know that I am able to answer your question in any more depth than that. So I could get an answer for you from our bond council, who's not present tonight, regarding, are there any more things we could be doing or meeting? But I don't have that answer.
I think you're just saying clarification for the people set out there going, what are they doing? So these guys are getting shares of this and that, and?
Well, that, and we just kind of, like I said, just kind of vote on it to move it forward, and it seems like that's kosher, as far as making everything happen the way it's for your books.
Right.
But is there anything else that could be done? I mean, the Branson Landing is a very consequential area, district in our community, and is there anything else? He owns it, apparently. That's just sort of my question. Is there any further discussion that could be had, that could, you know, move this beyond just a sort of a pro forma thing, if we so choose? That's kind of my question. But maybe it's not for this setting, but I did want to ask it in this setting, just so we kind of delineate to the people what's going on up here.
Sure.
Maybe that's something we can look into.
I will find out, and I will get back to you, for sure.
So did we actually get a vote, or did?
No, there has been no vote on this one, so you have a motion and second on the floor. Actually, I think there was a vote, but I don't know that everybody voted.
I think it stopped at the end down here.
Right, so I would suggest maybe just calling for the vote again.
Let's do it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
So the result of the vote is 5-0, let the record reflect, the city as the sole property owner within the Branson Landing TDD has elected Alderman Clay Cooper and Alderman Glenn Schultz to the Board of Directors of the Branson Landing TDD, each with three-year terms that will expire April 2028.
All right, that concludes the item scheduled for the Branson Landing TDD Property Owners Meeting. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the property owners' meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. The meeting of the Branson Landing TDD property owners is adjourned. I just like hitting that. All right.
So, so there is still the Board of Directors meeting within the TDD that we're having. I saw you put that guy.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
We just have one more meeting really quick. I know, I know, there's a lot of moving parts to this.
What did I do with it? It's that one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it is. The joint meeting of the Board of Directors for the Branson Landing Transportation Development District is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Schultz.
Present.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Cooper.
Here.
Houghton.
Here.
Lucas. Your Honor, you still have a quorum.
All right, the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I will now entertain, wait, are you sure we're at the right place?
So, this is a separate meeting, so the first one, property owners, you were sitting as Board of Alderman, now you're sitting as the Transportation Development District Board of Directors.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the TDD Board of Directors meeting, minutes of July 23, 24.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the Board? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries.
Madam Secretary, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is Resolution 2025-01, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Branson Landing Transportation Development District, appointing officers of the district.
All right, do I have a motion appointing officers and adopting the resolution? Anyone?
Chairman, I move to appoint Ralph LeBlanc as the chairman and executive director, Glenn Schultz as the vice chairman, Ruth Denham as a secretary, and Marshall Houghton as the treasurer. And adopt Resolution 2025-01.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the Board? All right, please vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Madam Secretary, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is Resolution 2025-02, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Branson Landing Transportation Development District, approving the budget for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2026.
Do I have a motion adopting Resolution 2025-02?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the Board? Please vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries.
All right, having no other business to come before the Board of Directors, that concludes the meeting of the Board of Directors for the Branson Landing Transportation Development District. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Please vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries.
The meeting of the Board of Directors for the Branson Landing Transportation Development District is adjourned.
Your Honor, the next item is the public hearing, a first reading of Bill Number 6566, an ordinance amending Section 94-8 of the Branson Municipal Code pertaining to subdivisions.
All right, we will now open this public hearing and begin with a staff report from Jennifer. There she is.
Yes, good evening, Board, Mayor Protem and Administrator Stapp. Thank you for your consideration this evening for this item. So tonight, we have an amendment proposal for Section 94-8, our minor subdivision article. This item was heard at the July 1 Planning Commission meeting, and after amending the proposal, it was approved by a 10-0 vote. There was one public comment from a community member during the public hearing, and that comment supported the amendment. This is a public hearing, so we have put our legal advertisement into the Branson Tri-Lakes News. So just to get a little bit of context for subdivisions, our current subdivision regulations, we have two processes for subdividing land. We have a major subdivision, and we have a minor subdivision. A major subdivision occurs in two steps. There's a preliminary plat, a final plat, and this takes approximately four to six months to get through the approval process from the Planning Commission and the Board of Aldermen. The minor subdivision occurs in one step, and it's an administrative process, takes about four weeks or less for approval, and to be eligible for a minor subdivision, you have, it's three lots or less, anything more than three lots can't be processed as a minor subdivision, and no extension of public infrastructure would be eligible for a minor subdivision, like for new street, or sewer, water, those sorts of things, and the minor subdivision can't create adverse impacts for the remainder of, or for the adjoining property. And I apologize, this slide, you guys cannot read this, I'm sure, but... sure, but, so, staff became aware of a limitation within our existing code that can have a negative effect, particularly for affordable housing developments that are tied to state and federal funding. These housing developments are typically phased and have sensitive timeframes for completion, and our current code can hinder their construction process. So, the current code right now states that parcels are eligible for only one minor subdivision, and further splits require a major subdivision process, which is the four-to-six-month process that we were talking about. The proposed change is to have sort of an exception to this regulation, to allow for up to three minor subdivision splits per a parcel that has already been through the minor subdivision process. So, in order to be eligible, you have to be a qualifying development, which we are calling out as housing developments that are credited or funded in whole or in part by federal or state government agencies or programs, and they, these developments also have to support community housing objectives. One thing to keep in mind is that these developments will also still have to be in compliance with the criteria for a minor subdivision. And why does this matter? This is going to help alleviate our housing supply shortages in the city. It's going to be more development-friendly, reduces regulatory barriers, supports flexibility in project planning, and this is also part of our red tape initiative to flatten the process of unnecessary regulation. This is just a summary of the proposed amendments, the current ordinance versus the proposed change. So, right now, in our current ordinance, it allows for the one minor subdivision, and additional splits require a major subdivision. The proposed change would allow for up to three subdivision splits through a minor subdivision for federal or state government-funded projects related to affordable housing. Current ordinance, the final decision is made by the Director of Planning and Development. Proposed change will also include a final decision by the Director of Public Works. That last bullet, this does not change in either version. Basically, they still have to meet all standard review criteria, which includes compliance with city codes related to zoning, utilities, infrastructure, stormwater detention, and comprehensive plan. That's how it is now, and that's how it's proposed for the change. So, this is just our current minor subdivision code. The only thing, I have it in red there at the very bottom, that's where it talks about this eligibility for a minor subdivision only once. This is our proposed code amendment. We're including four paragraphs that kind of speak to what I've been discussing, and if you guys approve this, then this would be our new code for our minor subdivision article. So, with that, Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed code amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any members of the board want to speak about this? Go ahead, Artie.
I just had a question, Jennifer. Why does it take four to six months for the process?
Yeah, because they have to do a preliminary plat first, and so that takes about two to three months, and then after preliminary plat approval, they have to follow up with a final plat, which is essentially the same process. They have to go to Planning Commission, Board of Aldermen. There could be a little bit of overlap if you kind of, you know, do some agenda management, but it's a long process.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Yeah, so, I guess I'd kind of like to drill into Artie's question just a little bit, so I understand it better. So, on the major subdivision, which would be dividing an existing piece of property by more than three parcels, right?
Correct.
That would be the definition of that. The issue of creating the plat, as it were, the preliminary plat, is on the developer to do that, right? That's not within the city's timeline.
No, that's correct.
Right, so that if it takes them two months to do that, that's kind of on them, right? They could accelerate that, I presume, if they, if they wanted to. So, when it then comes to the city, so they've got their major preliminary plat done, it comes to the city, it has to go in front of the Planning Commission, right, and that, I assume, requires a 15-day notice?
It does, yes.
And so, they would then have that 15-day notice, and I think our typical scenario is we also give a simultaneous notice for the Board of Aldermen. Is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
So, in terms of the timeline in front of the city, outside of what they're doing, assuming the Planning Commission gives it a yes, and does it come to the Alderman if the Planning Commission says yes?
Yes, it would go to you either way.
Okay, so, they'd have their meeting, and they meet twice a month. We have our meeting, and we meet twice a month.
No, Planning Commission just meets once a month.
Okay, I'm sorry, once a month.
The first Tuesday.
So, we're looking at maybe a 30-day process within the city's realm, right, if everything goes well?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, so, it doesn't seem like a big burden on these kind of developers to do that, 30 days for a project like this, but let me go through the minor subdivision, just so I understand it.
Well, and Glenn, excuse me, so, it's not just 30 days. I mean, it goes to, like, something gets submitted, we have to legally, we have two weeks to legally advertise, and then it has to be in the paper for 15 days, and then it will be on, like, a week later, that first meeting in Planning Commission. Two weeks later, it's on the first Board of Aldermen. Two weeks later, it's on the second for the second read, and then started over with the preliminary, or the final plat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but on the minor subdivision side of things, so let me, I want to both understand our current ordinance, because I haven't been through one of these before, and let me just say what I think it is, and then you correct me.
Okay.
That's okay. Somebody can take, say, a six-acre piece of property, as an example, and come to staff and say, "Look, I want to take this six-acre piece of property and break it up into three two-acre pieces of property," and that would qualify as a minor subdivision.
As long...
If it meets everything else, right?
Excuse me, yeah, no, as long as there's no public infrastructure that gets triggered, because if you're putting in, extending sewer, public sewer, public water, a roadway, right-of-way, then that automatically puts it into the major.
Right, got it.
It's just for those lots that have already been minor subdivided once, and they don't need the extensions of public infrastructure. It's kind of site-specific.
Yeah, just so I'm clear, I get it. I understand what you just said, but I'm asking about our existing ordinance first, just so I understand it. So, they can only do that once, right? So, if, if everything was right, the six-acre piece of property, if it was on a corner with roads, and they were going to take care of adding, extending the sewer into the property and all the things you mentioned, it would be a staff review of that today, is that right?
That's right.
And it wouldn't come to the Planning Commission or to the Board of Aldermen?
Not for that scenario, but if they had done that, if they had created three lots, and then later on, they wanted to subdivide further...
They couldn't do it under our current ordinance, right?
Well, they...
They'd have to come back in as a major subdivision and do a plat.
That's correct.
Preliminary plat and go through that whole process.
That's correct.
Okay, I got that. So, so, in that scenario, you know, if you took that six acres, divided it three ways into three two-acre parcels, under the proposed ordinance now, if somebody came and said, "Look, I want to take one of these two-acre parcels that were previously subdivided, and I want to, I've got federal funds to make this low-income housing, or I've got federal funds to do a J-1 program, or state funds, or whatever it is," at that point, then, before, without this ordinance change, they couldn't have done that without triggering a major subdivision deal. Now, it would come in, and staff could take that two-acre property and divide it again in thirds in the first appearance of it, right?
Assuming it meets...
Assuming it meets all the same conditions.
The criteria for that zoning district, for square footage, yes.
All the zoning, all the roads, sewer, all that stuff, right? I get that.
Yeah.
I don't think I want to keep repeating that, so I understand that as a basis. So, they, they could come in and say, "Okay, you know, we sold these two-acre, other two-acre properties, and there's nice houses on them, and now we've got this corner lot that nobody's bought, so I've got federal funding, I want to subdivide it." They could come in and say, "I want to take that two acres and break it up into thirds," right?
Mm-hmm.
Under that first time. And then, because it says they can do that two times, if I, up to three.
Three, correct.
They can come in again and take that and divide that again, and they'd be up to nine parcels maximum, right?
I think it's like a potentially-type situation.
I understand, it's potential. I'm trying to explore what the ordinance allows. So, they, they could do that. So, now you've got that two-acre property divided into nine acres, is that right? Or into nine, nine parcels.
Yes, but not, but it would have been done incrementally. I mean, it's not one sweep of, you know, creating...
Yeah, it's got to be two separate go-arounds, I assume, on that. Okay, so, now, the process at this point to do all that has been inside of City Hall, right? So, the, the proposal under the amended version that's brought before us tonight is the Director of Planning and Development and the Director of Public Works makes this decision, right?
That's the final decision, correct.
And I didn't ask it before, but that first go-around, when they do that subdivision, I understand it's three directors that make that decision under the current ordinance, right? It's also the City Engineering Director?
Well, so, right now, like, if, when we sign plats for city signatures, it's the Director of Planning and the Director of Public Works.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so, so, they've divided this piece potentially once or twice, doesn't matter, and it's in front of city staff, they make the decision. So, now, if you, if the city staff would agree to that, so that this two-acre piece is further divided in thirds or sixth or whatever it is, that, there'd really be no public notice, no nothing of that, and then they could apply for building permits to do what they've asked to do, and assuming they can secure the building permits, then construction would start. Is that, do I have that right?
That is correct. The way I understand it, unless Dustin or has any other thoughts?
No, I think that's how you're, I think you're understanding correctly.
If I could, can I do it? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this will maybe come more to light. We've got somebody with us in the audience tonight that this, we were trying to, let me give you a little bit of background, like what I did with the Plan Commission. So, I attended that meeting to try and give more of a global picture of real situations that we're dealing with every day in City Hall, and this one has come up with previously-approved CDBG grants that we were awarded from the federal government to the state and then to us, which was a big, big thing for us to be able to secure these grant awards. And what we found is that once we, these developments, and one of the developers is here tonight, so I hope he's going to speak, but they, they don't know for sure when they're going to be building the next phase, the next actual housing units, okay? And so, it makes sense, business-wise, is that they're doing it a piece at a time. They know the overall parcel. We know the overall parcel that they're going to be building it on, so our staff, of course, reviews that to make sure that the zoning fits the use, so that there's no challenges there, and all of the other criteria apply. And what we found is, after we did the first one, then we're like, "Okay, now it's time to do the second one," and we'll, and all of a sudden, it's like, "This is going to take at least another three months for the second one. The third one's going to take more several months after that." And we were looking at, per your direction, since really I've walked in the door, is, are there opportunities that we can flatten the process without sacrificing integrity? And this was one of those opportunities that we saw on certain projects, so we're taking a scalpel here. This is not a hatchet job. We're not changing this for all housing development across the city. We're looking at special circumstances when it comes to federal or state funds, and the reason we do that is because there are hard deadlines on those funds. And so, process was making it very difficult for somebody in the real life to be able to not just put a shovel in the ground to start a project, but actually complete it according to the terms of the grant award. So, we saw a bureaucracy problem that was going on with those funds, and we saw a bureaucracy challenge that we had internally, and we thought this was a micro approach to be able to solve the current issue before us, and then other projects that might come through down the road, again, flattening the process without sacrificing integrity.
Then, I'll hold further comments to see what the public has to say about this.
Any other board members? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Mr. Ruda, come on down. Right there, buddy.
My name is Mark Ruda, 1389 Sycamore Church Road, Branson. Specifically, so, a couple of things to specifically note about this. Number one, because it is state-funded or federally-funded dollars, those projects have already come before the city of Branson and have already been reviewed in this, in this room already once. And so, that was part of the thinking with how this was specifically written, to say, "Guys, this is not something that's, that the public is not going to get a, a listen on. It would already have come before this because, in order to get approved from that, the city was, it requires a city recommendation." And so, in this case, that's the reason, that's the reason that it was written this way. The second is, and so, the two projects that we are specifically working on, that this, that this has become an issue, is, one of them is a 12-plex that was approved over by Fall Creek Townhomes, and so, that piece of property has a 30-unit Lytech development that is on it and active right now, today. The 12-plex is adjacent to that, but because you never know exactly what the parcel size is going to be, you can't subdivide those parcels all at the same time, because you, you don't know how big, so the previous one was 30 units, this is an approved 12-unit. And so, as you can imagine, the lot split for the 30-unit is a different size than the lot split for the 12. And so, when you take a piece of property, let's just say 10 acres, and you divide 30 units off of that, then you have what's left of that, and now we're saying, "Okay, we need to split enough spot for 12 units off of it as well." And so, that's, that's the purpose of that one. There's another one behind Autozone, and there is an exist, there is a project being built right now that is a Lytech division, or Lytech home, Lytech project, excuse me. I think it's 48 units. It's in process right now. Again, there's an approved 12-plex right beside that one. And so, those are the two specific cases that this came up. The other thing is, many, many other jurisdictions in this region and, and throughout have codes that will allow more than one minor subdivision. And so, my hope would be that this is a first step into allowing more minor subdivisions, so that you're not having to go through the major subdivision process each time, and that would be, again, more similar to some of the surrounding communities. Part of the reason that it takes so long is because you're, in order to go through the major subdivisions, you're having to resurvey every piece of property in the subdivision, not just, not just the two acres in your example that you're trying to subdivide, so you're going back and resurveying all of that stuff. And so, the survey process gets harder, the notifications get harder, and, and the process is just more time-consuming. So, that's, specifically, that's what we were talking about. When we went through the planning and zoning, we, you know, the, the initial conversation was to make this a little bit broader, but I, you know, it, during the Planning Commission, that got narrowed down some. Again, there was some public support to try to, "Let's get this passed, and then let's, let's talk about, you know, should this be something that we would widen to make available for other projects and, and other things in the city of Branson as well?" So, I don't know if that answers more questions than it creates, or creates more than it answers, but if you have any specific questions for me, I'll hang out for one second, and then I'll go back and sit down.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, thank you. That was great. Is, am I correct, then, that your premise is, because these were previously approved by the Aldermen, it's gone through a bit of, you know, public review prior to this process being affected?
Correct, and it, it was specifically located during that approval where these are.
Yeah.
But again, the lot splits had not been done, because you have to do things in a certain order, and so, you know, it, it becomes this, how do you take a 10-acre piece of property and have a crystal ball to know exactly what size is to do that in? It, it becomes very difficult.
And I'm fully supportive of those projects. I think the Aldermen universally approve those projects, so I'm just trying to understand the nuances now of how we implement them.
Very good. Ralph, do you have something?
So, when, when you do that, when you do the second split, the balance of that property, let's just say the 10 acres, based on terrain and lot size of that, that gives you the capacity that you'll have for that third project there? Is that what that does?
Well, so, what would happen right now? So, let's, and both of these are slightly different situations, but let's take the one behind Autozone as an example. It was approximately 10 acres. It's been subdivi- It was approximately 10 acres, it's been subdivided once in order to create a specific lot for that 48-unit development. And that's what's going up and being built right now, okay? In order to start the 12-plex, we need to subdivide that from the remainder, and the reason is, is because, um, you know, the, the, in order to get the funding, we have to specifically deed that parcel, and we would have a mortgage on that parcel for, for our portion and have assets in that, in order to build that property, okay? But that would not necessarily affect the rest, I'm just gonna call it five acres that still remains. And so, in this process, what would happen is, you know, let's just, and these numbers are not exact, but let's just say, for example, that it was three acres for the 48 units, and now this is one acre for this, but this is the second subdivision, even though it's really, you know, it created two lots the first time, now we're going to take one of the remaining lots, split it into two, and so now there would be five acres left, and again, if we would get awarded yet another project, then we might come back and say, hey, do we need to split this again? And so, the, the reason that it's so complicated is because you just, you can't figure, there's just almost no way to know what type of project is going to get approved, and what the economics would dictate as to project size, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, the reason that Fall Creek Town Homes is 48 units, or excuse me, 30 units, whereas, as this project is 48, it's, it was a different approval process, it was a different funding process, so even though those two projects were similar projects to begin with, they were not the same size, and so they don't take up the same amount of area, and so, and, and then the topography will be different depending on each one, a- and so, it's, it becomes nearly impossible to try to, to try to predict exactly how to subdivide this, and so, it's not like where you go and take a 100-acre piece of property and subdivide this into 200 lots, and say, okay, I'm gonna sell a lot to each one of you to build your houses, and I'm gonna, now I'm gonna go back and, yes, I understand what you're saying, it, what's in the reading of, of this proposed amendment, but, you know, the, the nuts and bolts of the real reason that this is happening is we're doing this one at a time, and, and so, and again, the economics just, that's, that's how, that's what dictates this.
And I'd say my.
Alderman, I don't think your mic's.
To the grants and things like that, so, this definitely allows us to stay within the guidelines of the grants, to win them, when we do get awarded them, to be able to put you guys through that process and, and everything come out right, so, I think it's just a win-win opportunity on, on both sides, so, thank you.
What, what is the time on the grant, I mean, what is the timeline on using the funds, are they, are they all, do they vary, or are they?
Yeah, it varies on every single one, and so, that's the unpredictability of it, right?
Because, yeah, I mean, if you got two years, three years, I mean, and, and that's start to finish, like, the project has to be completed and.
This, this project is approximately a two-year, and it's two years from award to completion, and so.
Like, I mean, you're renting them.
Correct, yeah, correct. And so, it's, you know, if this was the only step, then this wouldn't be such a big thing, the problem is, is that there's 47 other steps, and you have to do them in order, and you, you know, so.
And by doing this, it, it helps that timeline.
Helps condense, that's correct, that's correct.
Go ahead, Marshall.
So, Mark, you kinda hit on my question just a little bit. Anytime we approve the CDB grants, we know that ultimately it's a business venture as well, and we know that you're not gonna know exactly how many plaits are gonna be at the, at the final, but, and I guess maybe this is a question of staff here, but, you know, when we talk about the, the public having their say in it, like, like you alluded to, could we put some kind of a range on that, so that it doesn't equate to 200 units from, it goes from 12 to then all of a sudden it's 200, I mean, is?
Sure, sure, so, the, so when we, when we came to get the approval for this project, and I, my memory's a little bit foggy, but let's just say it was October, November of last year, we, we submitted those four 12-plex units on this specific piece of property. It just had not been lot-splitted for that 12-plex, so we knew where this was, and we showed that schematically to this group at that time, and so now, we're sitting there saying, hey, we need to officially subdivide that piece of property for that 12-plex, which is, just for round talking sake, let's say, an acre, and we come up to this code, and we say, oh, we can't do that, we have to go through a major subdivision, which means, and this is in the same commercial subdivision as Autozone and all of those other pieces are in, and so, part of the, part of the challenge comes into, guys, is, there may be, like this one as an example, there may be a big sub, commercial subdivision, and once it gets subdivid, subdivided once, even though you have 10 acres of it, somebody else may have already used the subdivision for that, and so, I, I do understand your, your comment, and it's, I'm not saying that it's illegitimate, but, but sometimes, you may end up with a 10-acre piece of property, and we're just, we're, we're never gonna get a, a low income, based on the economics of how they work today, we're never gonna get a project that big in one phase, so. I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but hopefully.
Any other, Alderman, good? Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, buddy. Alright, anyone, um, let's see. Oh, yeah, sorry, come on down.
Good evening, Board, Administrator Matt Kendrick, 305 Lake Drive, well, that's where my one property is, also live at 200 Nathan Drive and Hollister. I guess one question, one question to the proposed change is, the final decision made by the Director of Planning, uh, Planning and Development and Director of Public Works, what happens if there's not a consensus amongst those two directors? Uh, would that go to, uh, to, to the city administrator or to a third director on that? Um, I, and I guess, and Administrator, I know when you presented this before the planning commission, there was language in there for exceptions for the J1 housing, is that on there or no, or?
No, we've just got the amended version that took out the J1 provision.
Okay, and, and just my opinion on that, guys, with, with what the TIV just approved, with the development coming and, and the amount of jobs that are gonna be required to operate those businesses, I think it's that we need to do everything possible to support, uh, J1 housing right now, until there's enough workforce by the locals or the local, to, that can support that, so, thank you.
Thank you, bud. Uh-oh, uh-oh. Gary, you were signed up for last week, I'm sorry.
Hey, I just love it so much. I'm the Chairman of your Planning and Zoning Commission, and we, we had quite an extensive hearing in this, and we discussed the J2, and he's one of the commissioners, and vote didn't work out the way, the way he wanted it to, but here's my understanding of it, it's gotta be simple for me to understand it. We already have a minor division, they can go ahead and do it right now, all we're letting them do is the same thing twice again. They've gotta meet every requirement that, that they don't get, that they don't get away with anything, a, and beyond that, we've, we've laser-targeted it in to a very specific situation, as Administrator Step pointed out. Now, we're not opening up all, you know, around the whole world, we're trying to solve a specific problem, and, and, yeah, we, we might expand it in the future, but to me, it's real simple, we're already doing it, we're just, we're just now doing it twice, we, we have two directors that have to approve it, and, and folks, if we can't trust our staff, then, then we, then we, we're in deep woo-woo.
Very elegant, thank you, Gary. Any more from the audience? Alright, this public hearing is now closed, you've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6566, do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Second?
Have a motion in a second, we have a motion, uh, any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? Anybody, oh, go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah, so I, I get the intent, and I really appreciate the comments by Mr. Ruda, I think that helps clarify it a lot. The only request I'd have, potentially, just for a second reading, is to ask our city attorney to take another look at the wording of paragraph CI, because the punctuation in there, and just the wording of "and approved by the Board of Aldermen" just doesn't flow together, I think, in the intent that it was designed to be. It doesn't really say that this had to previously be approved by the Board of Aldermen, I think the word "previous" would be very beneficial in there, and rework the punctuation. I'm happy to approve it for our first reading tonight, but just ask that our, maybe our city staff take a look at that and try to beef that paragraph up a little bit.
Alderman, just for a point of clarity, you're talking about the first paragraph, right?
Um, paragraph, on the revised version of this, paragraph CI, where it's specific, I'll just give you what says there now, so we're clear. "When a development requiring additional minor subdivision is designed to alleviate a housing supply shortages in the city in such housing developments which credited or funded in whole," which is credited or funded in whole, comma, "or in part by federal or state government agencies or programs and approved by the Board of Aldermen." I think we just could spiff that up a bit.
Yeah, I got it, we'll, we'll take care of it.
So are we good to vote on this one? Alright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
The result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 6567, an ordinance approving the contract with Corin Maine LP for the Advanced Metering Infrastructure Master Project Agreement and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 6567, do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion in a second, we'll begin with a staff report from Kendall.
Good evening. Uh, the Utilities Department solicited proposals for, from multiple vendors to identify a product that meets the city's operational and technical needs. Across a department selection committee compromising, uh, representatives from the utilities, uh, finance and IT departments was formed to evaluate proposals and recommend a vendor, uh, best suited to advance our meter infrastructure. The primary objective is to upgrade our aging and increasingly unreliable water meter infrastructure. Water meter readings are the, the foundation of our revenue collection, which in turn supports daily operations and maintains our service levels. Uh, transitioning to an advanced metering infrastructure system is a key step in modernizing our capabilities. The proposed AMI system enables near route, near real-time data collection and, for, excuse me, from water meters. Uh, this enhancement allows both billing and operations staff to monitor usage daily rather than relying solely on monthly readings. The, the increased visibility supports the, supports more accurate billing, quicker leak detection, and improved system management. And in addition, the system includes a customer portal that allows residences to monitor their water usage on a daily basis, um, accessible via web browsers or mobile devices, and the portal offers real-time access to meter data, uh, u-usage alerts, and notification preferences. Uh, customers will be able to detect leaks, monitor trends, and compare their water usage to that of similar households, empowering them to take proactive steps to conserve water and manage their bills. So implementing this AMI system will improve operations efficiency and enhance customer service and support long-term sustainability goals. And in order to implement the AMI system, the item before you is a master agreement with Corin Maine LP. Uh, under this master agreement, Corin Maine will oversee the procurement and installation of the new AMI system for the city of Branson. The scope of work includes system design and, and furnishing and installation of all pro, uh, project components, including the Census FlexNet base stations, water meters, smart point antennas, and related AMI infrastructure. Corin Maine will also supply Census software for meter reading and H2O analytics software for the customer portal. The, the agreement includes training on the, the use of both platforms, and the installation will be managed by Corin Maine over an estimated 365-day period using certified installers. The company will coordinate all water meter replacements and AMI infrastructure deployments, and the total contract amount is $2,967,976.40, which includes the purchase and installation of all equipment. And staff recommends approval of the agreement to facilitate the successful deployment and long-term operation of the AMI system.
Wow, that's pretty, wow, so how, is this, so you're saying this is a year-long process to do this?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a year-long process. It takes roughly around three months to order the equipment in, um, then installation will start, they'll start by installing the, the base stations, which will be located at Pacific Tower and Landmark Tower, so those, those are the centralized areas that'll collect the data from the meter sets. They'll start installing meters, um, in sequence, which will take roughly around nine months to install.
That's, that's a lot.
Yes.
Right?
It's, it's overwhelming for our staff, that's why we chose to contract it out, it's an extensive process. Um, however, our staff will help, uh, in the installation process, as there are some meters out there that are more difficult, that'll cost more if we was to contract them out, so we, we'll be using outside services with inside services to help keep costs down.
Wow. I mean, it sounds awesome, yeah, yeah, any, huh? That is a lot of meters, yeah.
We have roughly 4,500 meters.
Golly, anybody on the board, go ahead, Glenn.
Does this include the, I forget your term for it, is it dual-flow or dual-rate meters? Do those get replaced that the hotels have and some of those things?
Yes, so it gets rid of our compound meters, uh, which have two registers, and that's been, um, a big, uh, concern of ours over the last several years. Uh, we've had roughly, uh, 1,200 meters that were failing, uh, they weren't reading, uh, they weren't sending the readout through the electronic antennas that we currently have, that, uh, through the once-a-month reads, uh, and then we also had the compound meters where one of the registers were, were failing, and the manufacturer was no longer in business, and we could not replace them. So yes, this would fix those.
And what does this do to our budget kind of longer-term, you know, what's the forecast look like?
So currently, we're, um, this is budgeted out of tourism dollars, um, to, uh, fund this project, 'cause it is a big hit at front, at, at first. However, um, in future goals, uh, long-term planning, um, I have built into our rate model to, um, set aside dollars each year to build up funds over the next 15 years for the next replacement, um, so it's a long, long-term goal of, of, uh, building up those funds for long-term capital items.
So is the effect, is there any effect on, then, water rates to either commercial or residential for doing this?
Well, what it does is it starts to balance out our rates and what revenues we're capturing. The meters are gonna be more accurate, um, so we're gonna capture, um, all the usage that is, the customers are using, which in turn, it cuts our water loss down, so, we have to spend, you know, we, the water that is lost, we, we have to pay to produce it, but we're not gaining revenue back on it, and so, this will bring those gaps closer together, we still have leaks in the system like in our water mains, which, that's why we're accomplishing our neighborhood improvements where a majority of our leaks are at, um, however, this starts to bring those numbers closer together, our revenue and actual operation costs.
And, I mean, a, a, as of right now, you guys, how do y'all collect the data for, for reading the meters?
So currently, we use a, um, a remote read system, so, once a month, our staff drives around in their pickup, it has an antenna system built on it.
Right.
And they collect the reads. It's kind of a shot in the dark right now, of, a lot of the antennas are well over 10 years old, and they're really only guaranteed to 10 years in battery life, and so a lot of the, uh, antennas are starting to fail, so we're having more staff time with, with going out and doing rereads, um, because we didn't capture the read in the first read, and, and, um, and then we're also doing manual reads, because we just can't get the antennas quick enough, because they're failing. And, and so the new system will be, um, real-time data, it's, uh, the, the meter information is sent every, every day to the base stations, and then in turn, it gets uploaded into the cl- cloud software system, and, and actually, it's, it reads every 15 minutes, um, but it downloads, um, downloads approximately every three hours, so customers, around three to four hours, they can go in and look at their usage and, and see what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean, so that was kind of the point of my question, I mean, in, in the long run, this cuts down man-hours.
It does.
I mean, extremely, right, I would think, over the years.
And, and it also helps us with, uh, with water loss, with leak adjustments, uh, customers can pinpoint they have leaks right away versus a month later. So the, the system will send the customer and the city, uh, we can set it up to where we can, um, identify any customer that's using more water than normal, and set those parameters, and, and it helps us be proactive.
Yeah, 'cause in a lot of circumstances, somebody get their bill, and like, man, my bill's really high this month, and then you find out it's been leaking for three or four weeks, and then you're in a pickle, because they're like, well, that ain't my fault, and then the city's like, well, I mean, been there, done that, many at my theater, so, bring on the new meter. That's all I have, anybody else on the board?
Actually, I was just gonna comment to that.
Actually, I was just going to comment to that, like, you know, because that's been just a common thing here, probably this year, you know, with the kind of readjustments, once the meters were red, or some adjustment based on water usage and things like that. I mean, I know I've dealt with people that have had that issue. But even on a bigger scale, like, I know we, this, this something I know we've talked about probably at least three years ago, it was even part of the conversation. And, and what I remember the most was like, you know, yes, that number's going to be big on the front end, but thank God we have that tourism tax to kind of absorb so that we don't have to have those huge rate increases. And it's just another represent, representation of the level of transparency and fiscal accountability that we utilize as we're making those decisions, from trusting that you're doing the numbers that you're doing, giving that feedback to us, and then we can make those decisions based on that. And again, this is something that we seen coming, but we knew that it was going to be a big number, but here it is. We have this gracious, you know, sales tax or tourism tax that absorbs that for our residents. And I think that's a beautiful thing, and I think people kind of skirt over that quite a bit because all you think about is, oh, they're spending tax dollars, tax dollars, tax dollars. But in reality, we're just happen to be blessed to have this little cachet that we can always, you know, for infrastructure lean on to make these things happen so that we can keep our usage. Because what I have learned in the last almost four years is that we produce some of the highest quality water in the entire country, thanks to you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anybody else on the board? No? Anybody in the audience? Representative Sats, here we go.
For the record, I'm State Representative Brian Sats, and I live here in Branson. I'm not going to give my address because there are people that don't like me out there.
What?
Yes, believe it or not.
Really?
I do have a question on this. I think Ralph may have answered it, but Alderman Schultz asked if there's going to be rate increases for business and/or private home ownership. Are we anticipating that? Or, as Alderman LeBlanc said, this is going to be covered by the tourism tax. Will there be, because I know my, personally, my water bill has went up, and we had, we talked about that, and I'm paying a reasonable rate, I don't mind that. But is it going to go up again if we install these new meters?
So the answer to that would be, the, the tourism dollars, again, keeps the rates from going up what they could go up because of the project, right? So in this, in, let me try to formulate my words here. The, the, the revenue, the meters are going to be more accurate, so bills could be going up for individual customers that have meters that aren't reading as accurate as what they normally would, would read when they're new. And so you will have, we will have some gained revenues from that, and those bills, customers will see potentially a little higher bill in that, and because of that new equipment. However, the funding mechanism, since it comes from tourism, we're not, we're not hitting the rate. So we still will have rate increases just for normal operational costs that's from year to year, and we're staying really close with our five-year plan that we presented last year. So we shouldn't see anything significantly more than what we presented last year.
Some percentage of rate increase will.
Yeah, each year, we will have a, a rate increase, just to keep up with inflation, just to keep up with costs, materials, we've got the tariffs, we've got multiple things out there in the world today that affect our operational costs.
I just want to ward this off for the general public. There might be something coming, it's not going to be a huge percentage, and I did hear the term smart. We're going to have a meeting in these chambers tomorrow, and a lot of that meeting is going to deal with inaccurate electric bills and so forth due to smart technology that many people who are on that, with that electric company, they don't like the smart readers. The meters are inaccurate, and people are being overbilled, and I think you'll hear that tomorrow here at noon. What's the chance that this new system could be similar to what their, what Liberty is using, and we could get some inaccurate reads?
So we, the meter system that we chose is, is recognized by the American Waterworks Association as an approved system and meets their standards or testing requirements itself.
It's been in use for a number of years then, or is this new smart technology?
These have been in use for several years.
Okay.
We, that's in our selection committee of proposals. This is one of the topics that we discussed was, is this a, like, the latest and greatest meter that's out there, or is this a robust meter that's been proven? And these are robust meters that's been proven.
Okay, I just think that's very important. Okay?
And, and to Representative Sats' question, I, I think what I heard you say is, there's not a planned rate increase due to the cost of this new installation, but just the yearly, what could happen, but there's not, we're got to raise this because we spent two million dollars on this infrastructure. Right?
So let me restate this and say that, that the new meters does not change the five-year outlook that we presented last year.
Right.
However, what it could change is it could, will capture potentially more revenue, and it could drop our rate increases in the future.
Yeah.
As we start to, again, we collect more revenue and cut our water losses from billing inaccuracies, and then that in turn brings the rates down lower at that point.
Right, because Kendall, to Representative Sats' other point, you're actually anticipating more accurate accuracy. So that's why somebody might ultimately be paying more if their old reader was inaccurate. So, right, I see.
Yeah, usually when a meter fails, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of the time when it fails, it always fails in a customer's favor.
Well, that's good for us. Customer.
Customers usually find that.
We don't have a problem with that, right?
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
I was just going to make another comment. You know, you know, humans being humans, they always fall into a specific pattern, and, you know, anybody can go back and look at their water bills probably for the last five years, and if you've been in the same residential area, your usage is just about the same every single month because we're just kind of geared that way. And I think it's fascinating that you'll actually be able to, to track your uses so to, to maybe catch that leaky tank that you don't know is happening because you'll see that abnormal use. So that's what that's, this in essence allows us to do, and I think that's just a great thing. I mean, just being able to connect with that and being more interactive with city government on that level where your, where your dollars matter. I think that's cool, so.
Yeah. Everybody good? Anybody, everybody in the audience? No? All right, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Your Honor, I ruled, I move to read bill number sixty-five sixty-seven for its final reading due to timing.
Second.
So, we have a motion in a second. Any, any members of the board wishing to speak regarding this matter? Is, we're under the, I mean, are you ready to order? Are we, like, it's, it's time?
Yes, we, we've been working on this contract since the first part of the year.
Yeah, okay.
We've been vetting the, the vendor, we've been going back and forth with different questions to make sure we're selecting the right system, and, and again, the, they're holding their pricing at this point, but we're well beyond what they said they would hold it at.
So if this passes right now, and you get the contract, when, when do you foresee the start date? Do they have an idea of when they're going to start doing this?
So they will order material that will take roughly three minutes, three months to obtain the materials, and then at that point, we can start install.
Wow, okay. Anyone in the, anyone on the board? Comments? No? Anybody in the audience? All right, hearing none, please vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
So this was.
You good?
I'm good.
Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of bill number sixty-five sixty-seven, an ordinance approving the contract with Corin Maine LP for the advanced metering infrastructure master project agreement, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Oh, sorry.
All right, you've heard the final reading of bill number sixty-five sixty-seven. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any member of the board wishing to speak regarding this? Anyone in the audience? All right, Madam Clerk, will you now provide a roll call vote?
Schultz.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Howden.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number sixty-five sixty-eight, an ordinance approving the contract with Sensus USA Incorporated for the advanced metering infrastructure software as a service and spectrum lease agreement and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the first reading of bill number sixty-five sixty-eight. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion in a second. We'll begin with a report from Kendall.
Okay, I'll keep this real short because I filled you with a bunch of information a while ago on the Corin Maine. The Corin Maine is the vendor, and it's the, the, the contract has the dollar amount in it. This contract is the software company, which includes two parts. It's the actual software that the meter information is sent to, and, and integrates with our billing system here at the city. And then the second portion is the FCC notification spectrum management lease, which Sensus owns their own frequency, which is one of the reasons why we went with this company, because they have a nine hundred megahertz frequency that can reach out and with limited antennas. So it's, this will allow us to use their, their frequency itself. And it's a five-year agreement, and it renews for another five-year period after that.
Any members of the board wishing to speak on this? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to read bill number sixty-five sixty-eight for its final reading due to, as Mel Tillis would say, timing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any members of the board want to talk on this? Audience? No? All right, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is the first final reading of bill number sixty-five sixty-eight, an ordinance approving the contract with Sensus USA Incorporated for the advanced metering infrastructure software as a service and spectrum lease agreement, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the final reading of bill number sixty-five sixty-eight. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any members of the board want to speak? Anyone in the audience? All right, Madam Clerk, will you provide a roll call vote, please?
Schultz.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Howden.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number sixty-five sixty-nine, an ordinance approving the contract with H2O Analytics Corp, Corporation for the advanced metering infrastructure hosted software and services agreement and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
It's a lot of water talk, Kendall. You've heard the first reading of bill number sixty-five sixty-nine. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion in a second, and here's Kendall.
This is the customer portal that we spoke about earlier, and it is a agreement for three years with an automatic renewal for one-year periods after that.
Oh, wow. He got to it. You got to it. All right, any Aldermen? Any audience members? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Your Honor, I move to read bill number sixty-five sixty-nine for its final reading due to timing.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any board members? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is the final reading of bill number sixty-five sixty-nine, an ordinance approving the contract with H2O Analytics Corporation for the advanced metering infrastructure hosted software and services agreement and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the final reading of bill number sixty-five sixty-nine. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Any board members want to speak? Anyone in the audience? Madam Clerk, will you provide a roll call vote?
Schultz.
Yes.
LeBlanc.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Howden.
Yes.
Lucas.
Mm-hmm.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number sixty-five seventy, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement with the Public Water Supply District Number Three for termination of water services and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the first reading of bill number sixty-five seventy. Do I have a motion approving the bill?
So moved.
Motion in a second, and here's Kendall again.
Thank you. This is a renewing of an agreement we've used in the past several years here with Public Water District Three, and basically what it does is, is it allows us to terminate their water customer services when they don't pay their sewer bill. Previously, when we did not have this agreement in place, we had several, several thousand dollars worth of sewer bills that we were unable to capture, and then since this agreement, the, the customers are paying the bill, so.
What a concept. Yeah. I remember that being a really large number of uncaptured.
That's a big number.
It was a big, big number.
The penalties and interest was roughly around two million, but the actual sewer billings was, I think, around three hundred thousand.
Good grief. All right, any board members wanting to speak on this? Anyone from the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries. Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number sixty-five seventy-one, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement with Branson Public School District for the memorandum of understanding for the public, for the school resource officer program and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the first reading of bill number sixty-five seventy-one. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion in a second. We'll have a staff report from Chief Schmidt just popped in like, look at you.
Your Honor, members of the board, thank you. This is our annual agreement with the schools for our school resource officers. Nothing has changed since the last few years with it. Same amounts are covered through the agreement with the schools for the two police officers. We supply the other two police officers. We have our agreements in there for training funds as well as overtime funds as well. And we obviously are very happy with our school resource officer program, so we do request approval.
Chief, we're at all schools, right?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone on the board wishing to speak? Anyone from the audience? All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is five zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number sixty-five seventy-two, an ordinance approving the contract with Great River Associates Incorporated for engineering services for twenty-twenty-four TAP grant for design of two Hawk signalized pedestrian crossings on West Seventy-Six Country Boulevard and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
You've heard the first reading of bill number sixty-five seventy-two. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Motion in a second, and here's Michael Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, and members of the board. Really quickly, this is a thirty-five thousand dollar agreement with Great River Engineering for the design of the Hawk system for the crosswalks in segment three. So this was part of a TAP that you previously already agreed to, TAP being transportation alternative program that provides some of the funding for it. Each step of this, we bring back to you to satisfy the MoDOT agreement that's there. So that's what it is, and look for your approval.
All right, any members of the board wanting to speak?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
So you said part of it, is it all covered, or is it just?
It, it's an eighty-twenty split on this.
And is the, does the twenty percent come from the CID then, or?
No, and, uh, on this, it comes from the city on this one.
So I assume this is in our current budget then, and we're set to go.
Correct, yeah.
Anyone else? Anyone in the audience wanting to speak on this matter? Nope. All right, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
The result of the vote is 5-0, motion carries.
Thanks, Michael. All right, reports, and we start with Alderman Schultz.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, I attended the Glenn Campbell tribute. Uh, what a phenomenal event. I just wanna give my hat off to Alderman Houghton. He really nailed that thing. It was just great. I had no idea that the Campbell family overall was as talented as they are, and that night really brought that home. And it was also just great to hear our local entertainers add to that as well, so, thank you, Marshall. Just an outstanding job on that. Really had a great time, and I heard a lot of great comments around the community from it too, and it, to me, it looked like a full house, so, job well done, and I'm sure you raised a lot of money for the Alzheimer's Association, so, thanks for doing that. That was fantastic. Um, Representative Sats mentioned the Liberty Electric hearing tomorrow here at noon. Pay attention to this because in addition to all the billing errors that's been in the press, they're asking essentially for a 40% rate increase, which to me is unbelievable as a utility payer. And so I think anybody that's concerned about this should, uh, be present here tomorrow at noon in this room and, uh, listen to what they have to say and offer your respectful and appropriate comments to that. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, um, Chief Schmidt regularly brings, uh, Branson Citizens Police Academy into their, um, into his, uh, reports, and there's a new session of that coming up. If anybody's interested in going through this, it's a phenomenal experience. We have a few members here, um, that have gone through it. Um, you'll really learn what the police department does and all their various departments, phases, and activities. It's a 12-week course, Thursday nights, three hours per night, 12 weeks continuous. You do have to apply to attend to it. You can find the information on the city website. Uh, the only requirement besides committing to the time is that you have to have the proper background. In other words, you have to be a good guy. You can't be a bad guy to attend the classes. But it is a phenomenal organization, and after that, you're invited to join the association. And that group supports the, uh, police department at, uh, various events around the city and currently also underwrites their awards dinner night, so it's a great group. As much as we love the police department, I think anybody else that can get involved in this, it's, it's time well spent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ralph?
Yeah, my report's actually more of a PSA. I don't know if anybody noticed or not, but it's a little bit hot outside, so pay particular extra, extra attention, um, because it's pretty deceiving. Um, but, you know, just some signs of dehydration, dizziness, headache, um, blurred vision, little rapid heartbeat, might be something like that. Just pay attention to those signs and symptoms for yourself and also the loved ones around you, because you really don't know it's gonna hit you till it hits you. And once you've had one heat exhaustion event, they come pretty easily after that, so just kinda pay a particular attention over the next few weeks, because it looks like we got a heat dome parked over the middle of the country, and we just wanna be conscientious about that and not have any incidents within the city, our employees, and then also personally within our, our city family. So just, that's my only report for tonight. Thank you.
Well, with all the HTO talk, we were, I think we're covering hydration over there with Kendall. Alderman Houghton?
Hey Chad, do you have that picture, buddy? So, um, right outside these chambers is a little plaque that has all the entertainer holidays that Mayor Milton has proclaimed, um, but also any of the mayors in the past history. What was, what's really been cool over the time is to have these affirmed, whether by our state government or other cities. So, um, I'll, I'll give a shout out to Curtis Copeland, who's a staff member. Um, he's the chairman, I believe, of the Society of Ozarkian Hillcrawlers, um, and when we did Harold Bellwright's Shepherd of the Hills Day, we had Governor Parson come down and affirm that one, so it was kind of a city proclamation that got affirmed on the state level. But this is really neat, guys. So for Glenn Campbell Day, on the anniversary of when Mayor Milton named it last year, we got the cities of Phoenix, Galveston, and Wichita, all three of Glenn's iconic songs to name it Glenn Campbell Day. Um, so it really made it an, really a nationwide event. Um, you know, as Glenn mentioned, I mean, just the talent that was there that evening was just amazing. Um, the energy that was in that sold-out room, 1,100 seats, the old Roy Clark Celebrity Theater, which is where Glenn first performed in this community, um, and yes, we raised $8,500 for the Alzheimer's Association, so I'm really, really proud of that. Thank you. Eight thousand five hundred. So, uh, we, when we did the one for Grandaddy, we raised about $5,000 for the Pediatric Wheelchair Group, and this time we were able to go, um, a little higher. So I like to go bigger and better each time we do one of these things. Um, now, the, the question is, everybody asks me, "What's next?" And what's next is I'm gonna rest and try to figure out what, what maybe the next move is. But, um, anyway, just thought that was really cool. So it was Glenn Campbell Day all across the country. Um, what an incredible entertainer, and just speaks to the, uh, panoply of entertainers that have made this town special, um, and, and a unique place to grow up. So, thank you for this moment.
Well, I'd like to first say, I'm just really, really excited to know that I own the landing. I mean, that, that is, that's so cool. Now, I, I'm gonna start charging taxes on people down there. And I'd, I'd just like to follow up real quick on what Ralph was talking about. After spending four days at pools, and today down on, uh, 76 at the Ferris wheel, and all the bumper cars and bumper boats and everything with my grandkids, and getting dehydrated and getting burnt to a crisp at the Recplex, Cindy. But, uh, it was a great time with the grandkids, and, and having had, uh, heat exhaustion when I was a kid, uh, it does impact your life, and, and so I, I strongly concur with everything Ralph said.